Before we start this meeting, I want to let everyone know that we're going to be adding some new pomp and circumstance to the Board of Commissioners meeting. So in between invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please allow me a moment to introduce the young person who will be leading us in the pledge. So just be aware of that. Madam --
(phone rings)
I'd like to call the order. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 17th, 2012, our first meeting of the year. The invocation being led by Commissioner David Lechka.
Our dear Heavenly Father, thank you for watching over us and bringing us together, giving us the opportunity to make decisions that affect the lives of everyone in the county. Thank you for Dr. King for giving him as an example to live up to. Amen.
Recognizing the youth of Jackson County that display the values of integrity, leadership, and collaboration and responsibility, the Board of Commissioners would like to ask Lizzie Pine, a senior at Grass Lake High School, in her second year at the Jackson Area Career Center and Future Farmers of America program, to step forward and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Just a little history for you. Lizzie Pine, a senior at Grass Lake High School and involved in the Jackson Area Career Center and the Future Farmers of America. Lizzie's Career Center classmate Holly Riggs was killed in an automobile accident last year, and Lizzie took over the care and training of her classmates' animals, and then showed the steer at the Jackson County Fair. And at the fair auction, the Jackson community also supported Lizzie's efforts by donating over $10,000 to create a scholarship fund for other future farmers of America who need money to buy and show livestock. The proceeds from the auction will benefit young people in the Jackson area in the form of the Holly Riggs Agri-science Memorial Fund. Lizzie, your willingness to get involved will make a difference in the future and allow Holly's memory to live on, and we thank you. Clerk, would you call -- please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl? Commissioner Lechka? Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Vito?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Way?
Here.
Mr. Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Eleven present.
Thank you very much. At this time, I entertain a motion, please, for the approval of the agenda.
No move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion, and I have support. And did I hear another item? The Administrator would like to add an item to the agenda, please.
Yes, I would, thank you. We have come to a successful conclusion of negotiations with the POLC, and we'd like to bring that for consideration this evening.
We would like to make that item 15C on your agenda packet. Any other items to be added to the agenda? We'll take care of that at the consent agenda. Seeing none, all in favor, please say yea of the amended agenda.
Yea.
Those opposed? Nay? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition. Any communications or petitions to be given to the board? Please step forward and give it to the clerk at this time. Seeing none, we have no special hearings or public hearings. We've arrived at the first chance for the public to address the board. Please step forward, identify yourself, and remember this is your first time to speak. There is also at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
I'm Charity Steer, and I live in Waterloo Township. Abandoned prison camp Waterloo has been one of my very closest neighbors for over 40 years. And I wanted to ask the Board of Commissioners to please commend Director Hines for his efforts in getting that mess cleaned up and his initiative in making progress toward getting it torn down. I hope that the Commissioners will demonstrate their full support for our state legislators' efforts to appropriate funds for the demolition of Camp Waterloo, and that if you feel it will be necessary or useful, that you would consider a resolution to that regard if that is going to be productive in getting that mess torn down and ended. And I very much thank you for your support in trying to deal with that issue.
Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Mark Mueitz. I live in Summit Township. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I would also like to second the sentiments that Charity Steer just expressed. It's been about a month, perhaps a little more, since we appeared before you, gave you some what I thought were very graphic and compelling pictures of the terrible situation out there at Camp Waterloo, which has been abandoned for 10 years. Since that time, I assume that some of you contacted Director of Corrections Hines and asked him to get involved with it. He did, to the extent possible, hiring contractors, enlisting volunteers from the Department of Corrections to go out there and clean it up. They recycle a lot of trash, old scraps, a variety of forklifts and whatnot that were stuck out there. Where to place now, in correspondence with Director Hines, where he can't do anything more. He doesn't have the funds for it, and it seems to be somewhat stuck in the legislature, whether they think it's a worthwhile project or not, which I wholeheartedly think it is and I would hope and assume that you would, being in our county and in our townships. The township of Waterloo passed a resolution very, very similar to the one that we submitted to you a couple of months ago. They passed that with full support of the Chief of Police of Waterloo Township. That place out there is a crime scene, and it's going to be an attraction for all kinds of unsavory behavior. At this point, from the correspondence I've had from both Director Hines and from Earl Polesky, this funding is stuck in committees. And I'm hoping that with your political savvy and with your political influence, if you were to pass a resolution which, similar to the one we submitted to you, or exactly that wording, and pass it along to our elected officials up in Lansing, that they would have the impetus to go ahead and fund that about a million dollars and finally end one of the more disreputable aspects of city, county, and state government in the last 10 years. So we're hoping to work with you on this, and I think it would be the best thing to do. Thank you very much.
John Wilson, City Resident. Will the County Commission consider dropping its lawsuit against the city regarding the rainwater fee? Commissioners Mahoney, Smith, and Williams, each of whom represent the city and also who live in the city and pay city taxes themselves, should realize that as city and county taxpayers, our county tax dollars that we pay are being spent to sue the city while our city tax dollars we pay as city residents are being spent to defend the city against the county with this lawsuit. We all know that these tax dollars could be better spent or even maybe saved. As wrong as the rainwater fee is, the city is defending itself against both the county in one suit and in another suit that was filed against a couple businessmen who have businesses within the city. The county can save everyone money by dropping its lawsuit and allowing the other lawsuit to run its course. In hindsight, maybe if just one Commissioner would have attended and spoke during the City Council's public comment period during the discussions, debates, and subsequent vote on the rainwater fee, then maybe we would have had a different outcome. But that's just rainwater under the bridge. No pun intended, but whoever would have thought rainwater would be so expensive. Maybe it's not too late. How about each County Commissioner attend the next City Council meeting, and during public comment, get up and voice your strong opposition to this rainwater fee? And maybe then the City Council will finally listen and possibly vote to repeal it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment for the first time is closed. We're moving on through the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the 12, 13, 11 meeting of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Clerk? We have a motion and support. Any comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Vote for consent agenda.
We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Vote.
We have support for the consent agenda. Commissioner Way?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I would like to pull item 12D7 for discussion, please.
Transportation agreement between the County of Jackson and the City of Jackson Transportation Authority. I would please ask Commissioners to move that to 15 -- excuse me. To, excuse me, 13D1 under Personnel and Finance, Commissioner Vito. Any other items for removal from the consent agenda, please? Use electronic devices to vote, please. Consent agenda passed, 11-0. Standing committees. County Policy chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
County Affairs and Agency chaired by Commissioner David Lechka. Commissioner Lechka?
Thank you, Chairman. We have some appointments tonight, starting with the Mid-South Substance Abuse Advisory Council. We have two public members, terms expiring January 2014. The committee nominates Jeffrey Grantham and Dennis Peck.
We have a motion and support. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried, 11-0. Chairman Lechka?
Next is the Emergency Management Advisory Council. One member of representing state police. Committee nominates Sergeant Kathy Fitzgerald, and one sheriff representative. The committee nominates Sheriff Stephen Rand. Those terms expire December 2013.
We have motion and support, since those are dedicated seats. There is no nominations from the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried, 11-0. Chairman Lechka?
Next is Region Two Area Agency on the Aging. We have one public member, term expiring April 2012. The committee nominates Patricia Spink.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any nominations from the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to nominate Carol Corbin.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl?
Spink.
Commissioner Lechka?
Spink.
Mr. Rice?
Spink.
Commissioner Duckham?
Corbin.
Mr. Alexander?
Spink.
Mr. Vito?
Spink.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Spink.
Commissioner Williams?
Corbin.
Commissioner Way?
Spink.
Commissioner Elwell?
Spink.
Chairman Chatwell?
Patricia Spink.
Patricia Spink has it. Ninety-two.
Patricia Spink passed, 92. Chairman Lechka?
No other business, Chairman.
I ask a request of the Chairman to please allow the Chairman to make his appointment to the Retirement Board, if you would.
Go ahead.
The Chair recognizes Marcy Wendell, the Department on Aging, to become the administrative member of the Retirement Board.
Would concur.
Support. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 11-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Lechka, for that indulgence. Anything else to report, sir? Human Services chaired by Commissioner Jonathan Williams. Chairman Williams?
Mr. Chairman, we have no additional business to come before the board this evening.
Thank you. Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Jim Vito. Commissioner Vito?
Yes, we do have one item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and that'd be D7. With that, I would make a motion to approve the contract between Jackson County and the Jackson Transportation Authority for $100,000 for their 2012 appropriations.
We have a motion and support. Commissioner Way?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This did come up during Personnel and Finance, and there wasn't any discussion, but I did want to bring it back in front of the full board and for some of the newer Commissioners, some of the history on this. Four or five years ago, we used to contribute $135,000 for five days a week. Then when we -- I think at that point, we were looking at a drop in our revenue sharing, so we started our master plan, and we dropped it down to $100,000, which would cover three days a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. With this contract, we've been notified for the last year or so that we've been going over the hourly rate for our services, and the JTA, in being good stewards of our money, have now come and told us that they need to drop half the hours from, I think, two hours. They run three vans, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, from 6:00 to 6:00, and now they will be dropping at two hours a day. And I know I have people in my district, both Summit and Blackman, that use it. They go to doctor's appointments. But I just, I'm not advocating to bring this to -- I just want to get some discussion, see how the rest of the board felt about this, whether there was some support, no support, or do we need some more information? Do we need our Administrator to give us some more information? But just wanted to see what the feeling is with the full board. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
I would like to see if the Administrator could look into the matter. This service goes out to the Village of Brooklyn. I know people there that need some service, and they've lived through the cuts we experienced a couple of years ago, and now we're looking at cutting again. So I'd look to see if there's a possibility to do like Commissioner Way was talking. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Well, I concur with Commissioner Way and Duckham. Certainly, the service is out in Leonie Township as well. In fact, not far from my home. If the Administrator is going to look into this, I would specifically like to find out what it really boils down to, is we're looking at 309 hours, minus 309 hours. So in essence, we're looking at a minus six hours a week. So I would really like to see how that minus six hours a week is actually going to affect the public, or if there's a way that things could be switched around to possibly it might not affect them at all. So if it's going to be looked into, I would really like to have that clarified.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I really thought about this item at great length, and I really feel that JTA needs to sharpen their pencil. I know over the past several years, due to projects that were not being able to be funded throughout the county, that JTA has received many dollars for vans, additional cost of vans that they were not going to receive, but because projects did not have enough money to complete a project, those dollars were allocated to JTA to buy additional vans. And I really think that there's too many vans on the same street at the same time, and that rides need to be combined. And I talked to a lot of your drivers, Cameron, and I'm just going to tell you, there's just, they don't feel that the pencil is being sharpened, and that there's a lot of back-and-forth with drivers on the same road at the same time. And so, you know, we're talking about 392 hours. I understand that. But I think with the additional dollars that you've received from Region Two and from MDOT for dollars that, you know, weren't able to be spent, I think that you could sharpen your pencil, and these were county dollars, they were rural dollars, that perhaps you could sharpen your pencil and find a way to help the constituents of the general
Thank you, Commissioner Mahoney. Commissioner Vito?
There seems to be quite a few questions or some concerns from my fellow Commissioners. I guess it'd be my recommendation as Chair of Personnel and Finance, we have a motion and a second on the floor, to go ahead and pass this motion this evening, and then after that vote, to follow up with a motion from an individual directing the Administration to do some follow-up and some information gathering, so we could look at it next month's meetings.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Just one quick one. I will support what we've moved tonight, and I'd also support the Administrator looking into it. And I think one of the things I'd like looked at also is, I pulled up the memo that we got through Personnel and Finance, and it talks about the drop in hours due to cost increases. I'd be curious to know if there's anybody else that contracts with JTA, and if their contracts have had the rates raised on them also. I think is a valid point. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Let's vote, using our electronic devices, please. Contract has passed. I would like to entertain a motion to direct the Administrator to return at the February Board meeting with an analysis of the possible increase of four hours served.
No move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and support. Questions? Do you understand where we're at?
Yeah, I do. A quick question, though. When you say the February meeting?
Thirty days.
Thirty days or the February meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to come to this board, then? You don't want to go through the committee and?
I think you should.
We'll follow the committee process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which will be less than 30 days.
We have a motion and support. Commissioner Mahoney moved. Commissioner Vito supported. Commissioner Vito?
With all the comments made this evening, I would suggest all County Commissioners that in the next couple of weeks, if you get any information that you would like our Administration to look into, please do that, so they can have the information requested and needed for our committees meetings for next month.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Chairman Vito?
That completes my part of the agenda this evening from Personnel and Finance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
We have no unfinished business to come before this board. At this time, we're at new business. Entertain a motion to accept a donation of $6,000 from Dorothy Blakely Foundation to be designated for the Falling Waters Trail.
No move.
We have a motion and support. Commissioner comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We now have arrived at the POEM Negotiating Tentative Economic Agreement summary. Do we have -- can I entertain a motion, please?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Commissioner Elwell, support by Commissioner Duckham. Any questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, let's use our electronic devices, please. Contract is accepted, 11-0. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to receive the document for the POLC agreement as given to us by our HR Director.
Don't move.
Motion to receive and support? Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. The POLC tentative agreement, as a three-year agreement, represents the county's 911 operators, and we're very pleased to be, have been successful in negotiating a tentative agreement, which we believe provides a fair package for the union and also balances the county's dedication to fiscal prudence, and we thank you for your consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd say move.
Good job to our negotiating team, Mr. Chair.
We've now returned to public comment. It's your second time to speak. If you'd like to, step forward, please identify yourselves and address the board. Seeing none, we're at Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lechka?
I think you all got noticed, but the County Soil Conservation Dinner is next Tuesday night, the 24th, at Davis's Convention Center at 5:30.
Any other Commissioner comments? I want to thank everyone for attending, and we're adjourned.